Call to order the City of Beaumont City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 2nd. And we'll start with...
I'm going to do roll call.
Please.
Will you call the time for me, please?
5:02.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Here.
Councilmember Laura?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Here.
And Mayor White?
Here. And we have no public comments?
No public comment.
Okay. So with that, we'll adjourn to closed session at 5:03. Okay, we'll call back to order the City Council meeting for the City of Beaumont for May 2nd at 6:05. And do we have anything to report out of closed session?
Yes, the council met in closed session. Item 2 was conference. Item 2 was conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.91. Rosemary Morgan et al. versus Beaumont Police Department et al.
All case number RIC 1118540. There was no reportable action taken on that item. Item number 3 was conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495, 6.92, and/or 4, consideration of one claim and discussion of possible acceptance, rejection, or settlement of claim. And it's a claim by Mendoza, Sandra Mendoza and Justin Reagan. And there was reportable action on that item. There was a motion to deny the claim by Mayor White and a second to deny the claim by Councilmember Laura. And the vote was as follows: Mayor White voted to deny the claim, Councilmember Laura voted to deny the claim, Vice Mayor Carroll voted to deny the claim, Councilmember Martinez voted to deny the claim, Councilmember Roscoe also voted to deny the claim. That's a report out from closed session. We have no absences to excuse. And Mr. Roscoe, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Wave a hand with your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Chaplain Grimes will give the invocation.
Father, as we've gathered here in your presence, we gather to give you thanks for your generosity, for your love and your mercy toward all of us. And we ask that you bless this meeting, Father, that you bless the council and the others who serve here this evening. We just pray for the emergency responders, the fire department, the police department, the dispatchers, and others that are here to serve the community and to be available for anything that they need to do to keep us safe. Father, we look forward to this evening. We pray that this meeting will be one that glorifies your name, one that will solve some of the issues that the city faces, and that those issues that come up will be brought up, Father, in a loving manner, and that the meeting will be done in such a way that will glorify your name. Father, thank you again for your generosity and for all that you do that goes by unseen in our lives. It's in the name of your son that we pray, and thank you. Amen.
Do we already do roll call?
No. But I can do that.
I skipped that.
It's okay. Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Here.
Councilmember Laura?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Here.
And Mayor White?
Here. We have a couple recognitions tonight, proclamations actually. Mr. Laura, I'd like you to start with the Mental Health Month proclamation.
Whereas, mental health is part of a person's overall health and wellness. And whereas, one in five adults experiences a mental health condition in any given year, and one in 17 adults lives with a mental health illness such as major depression, bipolar disorder, or schizophrenia. And whereas, approximately one-half of chronic mental illness begins at the age of 14, and three-quarters begins at the age of 24. Whereas, long days, sometimes decades, often occur between onset of symptoms and when the individuals get help. And whereas, early identification and treatment can make a difference in a successful management of mental illness and recovery. And whereas, it is important to maintain mental health and learn the symptoms of mental health illness in order to get help when it is needed. And whereas, every person and community can make a difference in helping end the silence and stigma that for too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help. Whereas, public education and civic activities can encourage mental health and help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. Now, therefore, the City of Beaumont issues this proclamation recognizing May 2017 as Mental Health Month.
Thank you. And then we have a Public Service Recognition Week proclamation. Mr. Martinez?
Proclamation: Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. Whereas, public employees take not only jobs but oaths, and whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, Border Patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others, risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas, public servants include teachers, doctors, and scientists, trained conductors and astronauts, nurses and safety inspectors, laborers, computer technicians and social workers, and countless other occupations, day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas, without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now, therefore, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens and said, seal here too, that May 7th through the 13th, 2017, is Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Now we'll move to the public comment period for items not on the agenda. Any one person may address the City Council on any matter not on this agenda. If you wish to speak, please fill out a public comment form provided at the back table and give to the City Clerk. There's a three-minute time limit on public comments. There'll be no sharing or passing of time to another person. State law prohibits the council from discussing or taking actions brought up by your comments. Do we have anyone here to speak tonight?
I know we have one of the recipients from the Public Service Proclamation.
Oh, okay.
That would like to come up and receive the proclamation.
Would you come out? Did you want to say something?
No.
Okay. Why don't you come on up? We'll get a picture taken. I'll take three photos. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Yuen La. All right, so do we have anyone to speak on the public comments?
No other speakers.
We have a gentleman in the back. Just come on up. Bring the form, though. Okay.
My name's Diego.
I'm sorry, wait a second. Let me open public comments at 6:14. Thank you. Sorry about that.
No, that's all right. My name's Diego Rose.
My name is Bianca Figueroa.
We just wanted to come and introduce ourselves to the council, members of the city, and staff. We are hopefully going to be taking ownership of Marla's Restaurant, which has become a staple here in the community. We're very proud to be part of this community. I own Boondock's Tavern currently in Banning, and we're really excited for our new adventure here. Understanding what Marla's and Jimmy Figueroa's has been to the community is kind of an honor to kind of step into that. So, really, we're just here to introduce ourselves and say thank you.
Outstanding. If you do take ownership, what's the timeframe on that?
Well, we're looking to close escrow beginning of next week. Actually, the 9th, we're hoping to have keys in our hand, and Marla is really hoping that, too.
Okay.
She wants vacation, so fierce.
All right. Well, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
So we could get tacos on the 11th?
Yeah. Mother's Day first, let's come in.
Thank you.
And do we have any other speakers?
No other speakers.
Okay, I'll close public comments at 6:15. Next, we'll move to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are taken as one action item unless an item is pulled for further discussion here or at the end of the action items. Approval of all ordinances and resolutions will be read by title only. Do we have any speakers on any of these items?
None.
Okay. And are there any items that council would like to pull for further discussion? All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar. Seeing none, I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura?
I just, real quick, briefly want to say one thing really quick in regards to one of the agenda items that we have is I just wanted to express my gratitude to John Pinkney and his firm for the work that they've done for the City of Beaumont. We have had many a long night, and Mr. Pinkney has been very dedicated and a professional individual in helping this city get to a better place. And I think if you ask anybody, they'll tell you that the city is in a better place today than they were even a year ago. And so, Mr. Pinkney, I'd just like to thank you for your efforts and your dedication. And yes.
Say the yes.
Yeah. Right, Lloyd?
What's that?
For us.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes.
So we'll move to item number eight, response to public comments, homeless concerns.
18, you mean.
Item 18. Can always count on you, Mr. Roscoe, to keep me on the straight and narrow.
Somebody's got to do it.
Yeah, I guess so. You're not doing it, are you?
I guess. I'm useless. Especially with the migraine.
Evening, Mayor and Council. And so, last week at the budget workshop, we spoke briefly in response to some of the concerns that the public had about the homeless. I prepared a detailed report, which really encompasses in writing more to what I spoke to last week, but just to give some highlights, the City of Beaumont and Beaumont Police Department committed to collaboration, collaborate with many partners, including the community. Obviously, many of these camps, we wouldn't find if it wasn't for community involvement. And the community wants, you know, the people checked on, oftentimes make sure that they're alive and well, and then oftentimes, they would like, you know, them to not be in front of businesses or local parking lots where they feel intimidated to visit. And so, one of our teams, our multiple enforcement team, it used to be part of our community policing detail, that's part of our multi-enforcement team, they've taken on the task of working with our different agencies to address the homeless population. And so, at our last count in partnership with Riverside County, that number was 18. And so, what happens is throughout the United States, at one time, different social services teams go out and they count all the homeless. That way, we know that they're not migrating due to weather, so they're not counted twice. Just sorry. It's me. Okay. And so, with the 2,400 and some homeless in the county of Riverside, 2,413 to be precise, 18 call Beaumont home. And so, we're looking at .75 percent. And so, it's certainly not a problem that's something that can't be tackled. In fact, we, just in the last two weeks, we've identified three additional homeless camps that were either on private property or city property in flood control zones, and we've assisted those folks in moving on or having the property owners clean up their property. And so, because the encouragement isn't to allow them to drift throughout the city, it's to connect them to resources so they're no longer homeless. And so, as I mentioned last week, currently, we don't have any homeless veterans that we've identified. That doesn't mean one couldn't have shown up last week or whatnot. We don't have homeless families, so we don't have a mother or father with children in a car that we've identified. And we don't have developmentally disabled homeless in the city right now. And so, those are some of the ones that are easier to connect to resources because the shelters are open to women and children, but not to men many times because there aren't enough beds. Or the veterans are easy enough because we will give them a ride or give them a bus pass to the Veterans Administration in La Malinda. But when you have somebody that's chosen to live a lifestyle, those are the harder ones to assist because they may take money, but they won't take the social services. And so, we have a campaign with our local merchants to not give to, not to give cash, but to give to Riverside 211 so we can connect the people to resources. And so, in finally addressing this, you know, our calls for service have decreased by 36 percent with the homeless. And like I said, some of our panhandling is up 6 percent. That's going to be typical in the colder months. We expected that would decrease as some folks are going to be able to move back out to the Midwest and to colder states as the weather warms. And so, we're going to see an influx in the colder months, but now we should see a decrease. And so, with that, I would submit the report and open it up for any questions.
Are there any questions for the chief? Mr. Roscoe?
Okay, so identifying population and the detailed specifics in terms of what kind of population, are there currently any members of that community that, you know, that present a threat to the community in terms of, you know, because some of our, some homeless population tend to be...
Right.
You know, a threat. Have we, by you guys having to identify, have you identified any that, and if you have, what has the police department have done or the city has done to, you know...
Sure.
Deal with the threat?
Yeah, absolutely. And so, with any person that has some behavioral health issues, it's a cycle. And so, you get them onto the medication. We would take them under our WNI 5150 hold, would transport them to ETS, it's a county facility. They're going to be evaluated to get on their medication, they're good for some time, and they say to themselves, hey, I'm good, I don't need the medication. Sometimes it makes them sleepy or lethargic, they don't like it, they quit taking it. And they, it's a cyclical event, but we address it on whether it's a call for service or the officers recognize them, they recognize erratic behavior.
Because some of the population does tend to hang around in some of the shopping centers and businesses. I know some of the businesses have not complained about some of the individuals, but there are some population, of that population, that do tend to disturb some of the businesses. And so, when that, when those calls come in, I mean, for example, Stater Brothers and Highland Springs, they tend to go in that shopping center there. How is that, I mean, how is that handled? Do we send a patrol there and, you know, take a report, or do we remove the person? I mean...
Absolutely. And so, it can be a number of responses, but absolutely, I mean, there's no call that the police department will respond to. And so, if we're called about a subject, we'll go there, we'll determine the type of call and what the appropriate response is. If we can arrest him, we will. As you know, the sheriff has spoken publicly about it, minimum bed space and fed kicks, and these are, most of these are misdemeanor crimes, they get right back out. And so, what we try to do is keep a proactive presence so that if they're, you know, if they're going to engage in criminal behavior, they're not going to want to do it in Beaumont. And that's always been the message, you know, is removing one of the three elements of a crime, either the victim, the suspect, or the location. And all we have to do is remove one, and we don't have a crime. And so, but to give you a very precise example, the manager or the owner-operator of the AMPM at First in Beaumont spoke to me Friday personally about some homeless situation. I passed that information on to our multiple enforcement team. Detective Marsh is on that team. He's able to address the camp today. The homeowner, excuse me, the property owner, because they're on vacant land most of the time, has been noticed, and they're scheduled for a weed abatement and a cleanup in the coming time. A lot of these just take time. You know, they have rights, and they're still, they're human, and they're our residents, they're just without home, and so, they get treated with the same courtesy, rights as every other resident in the city.
And that's kind of where I was going because, you know, I know in the past, maybe in the previous administration, not you, under you, but there's been some incidents with our transient population and some concerns of me in terms of how they're handled and how they're treated. And I know how some cities deal with it differently. I just don't want to become known as a city that, you know, violates rights. Because it makes a difference what type of population you are. Every person in our community, either transient or not, you know, their rights need to be upheld. I know you talked about some of the things that, what the county does. I think we all know that our transit population, that issue homelessness or transit, it needs to be done as a regional approach. We can't, one city alone cannot deal with such, you know, with such population. We have to do it regionally, tag team with other cities and as well as the county. Have we reached out to Banning and see what, because obviously, they're just, some of them are just going back and forth. We've heard, you know, things like Banning, you know, will pick them up and take them to the City of Beaumont, and Beaumont will take them to the border of the City of Banning. You kind of hear those rumors, but, I mean, what are we doing with our neighbors in terms of, not just with the county, but with our neighbors in dealing with the population?
Yeah, great question. And so, but to address the second part about the rumors first, we don't, we don't put anybody in our car, that we don't have a lawful right to detain or arrest and drop them off in another city. That is not anything that we condone, and we won't do it. Secondly, you know, I believe in local control, I've talked about it. You know, if we take care of our residents, the ones that are homeless or not, and we don't force this issue, or Sacramento tells us, you know, they came close to the homeless bill of rights, and that would have had a severe impact on all of us because then it would have been Sacramento telling us, us Beaumont, how to deal with Beaumont's residents. And you don't, you don't want that because it's, every community is unique. But to answer the first part is, yeah, absolutely. The chief and I coordinate, we also coordinate with the councilwoman on the point-in-time contact with their shelter, whatever needs they may have, with the county, with the CHB. It really is a regional approach. Because absolutely, we can't bounce these folks around from city to city. That's not a resolution. You know, that's just, that's just dodging your responsibility.
They're just going to come back. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Laura?
Chief, did I hear you correctly that the population increases when it's colder, not when it's warmer?
So we believe, what we've seen is in the colder months, you're going to see more of the nation's homeless migrating to California because of our warmer weather in the winter. And so, our population will increase, and then as it warms out, they'll hop on the train. You know, there's always, you have to understand, there's two people we're talking about. We're talking about transients and homeless. And homeless are usually by chance, by some circumstance, I should say.
Okay.
Loss of employment, behavioral health, you know, whatever you have in that case. And then some are transits, and those are people that made a willful choice. And I've spoken to many of them myself, they say, listen, this is the lifestyle I'm going to live, and I don't need your help. And they'll willfully refuse it. And so, you kind of look at both. But, yeah, absolutely. You know, you're not going to stay in, out back east in the winter in the blizzards if you don't have a home when you could take the train to California.
Okay.
And so, you'll see even a greater population in the Coachella Valley. And even when it's cold here, they'll move, they'll keep moving out that way. We'll get some, but they'll move back.
Good.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Mr. Martinez, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just a couple. On chief, on the report, on the staff report here, where it says that on cleanup, where it says the code enforcement contracts clean up with approval from City Council, what's that referred to?
Yeah, absolutely. And so, sometimes what you have is you have, we had one, I'm trying to remember if you were on council then, but it was a pretty large cleanup behind the Amalt Storage.
I remember that.
Yeah, absolutely. And so, what happens is you have out-of-town property owners, but we've identified a life safety issue that needs to be addressed immediately. So, we'll come to you and say, can we clean it? And then put it on their property tax.
And lastly, I contacted the Chamber of Commerce to see if they had any comments on this, and they were actually pretty good with the way things were going. They didn't have any further comments, but they gave the interest that they're looking forward to your report and see what we had to say about it. So, just a heads up, they might contact Todd or yourself for, you know, further follow-up. But they were pretty pleased with the way things have been going overall, you know, as a group, so.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll, do you have any questions?
Yes. You mentioned that there's specific areas that are more common to run into the problem than others, and then you mentioned a few. I have a question about the downtown area. Do you get more problems from your end, do people report more problems to you? Because that's where I've heard most of the comments, are from the downtown area business people.
Right. Absolutely. I mean, so when they, when they set up their camps, they try to do it in areas that are desolate so that they have privacy and whatnot. But during the day, when they're active and they're soliciting for funds or recycling, they're going to, they're going to come to our shopping centers. And so, you're going to see them often, and many times, you know, you see the same people because, you know, you're going to travel down Beaumont Avenue often or Sixth Street the most, right? And so, you, that's where most of our traffic is. And so, you'll see them congregating, you know, at the USA Gasoline or maybe Baker's at the patio, and we're aware, and we'll move them along and work with the property managers. Again, they're, they have a right to sit.
Sure.
You know, and so, the law just says that you can't loiter around ATMs and banks and certain things to that effect. But as far as, you know, Food for Less, Stater Brothers, they can be in the parking lot, but they're not supposed to solicit aggressively. And that means they're not supposed to follow to your car and put their hand through your wet car window. And then, you know, when we get to those, then we'll have another situation where our district attorney does not enforce Beaumont municipal codes. And so, you know, that'll be, when we have those cases, we try to cite them administratively. If we charge them with the misdemeanor section of municipal code, then the city attorney would have to prosecute those and handle those. Our district attorney will not handle ordinances.
Well, you've done, I've heard comments of concern from the downtown area, such as by the Women's Club, et cetera. And then, I have to say, they were very well addressed. I haven't heard any comments from that area for a while now. You know, I know that the containers were moved, and that was a problem because people were setting up housing in between the containers there. And so, every time that I've heard of a problem from the business people, then I've heard afterwards that it was pretty well addressed. So, you're doing a very good job of doing it in a way that's also respectful of both ends of the equation there. Because that's usually what I hear afterwards.
Absolutely, thank you. And we partnered with Mr. Burke on two of these situations. The Women's Club was a collaborative effort to get the containers moved and that, and then recently one up by Noble Creek Park, and we removed that one as well. So it just takes people up to seeing it, calling takes people up to seeing it, calling it in, and we'll, you know, we'll help these folks get the right, connect them to the right resources.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
I move to receive and file the report.
One second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Carroll?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes.
We'll move on to item 19, a tentative tract map number 37045, proposed division of a 7.02 acre parcel, parcel into five lots for conveyance purposes located east of Highland Springs Avenue, north of First Street, south of Second Street. So it's the corner of Highland Springs and Second Street, right?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is a tentative tract map, calling for a subdivision of seven acres into five lots, ranging from about 1.01 acres to the largest being 2.31. It's intended to create parcels which overlie the previously approved plot plan. Not plot plan, but something that Planning Commission approved a couple meetings ago. And it houses the, the inline suite that's gonna have the Panera Bread, the Le Schwan tires, the full service car wash, as well as the Sonic Burger and drive-thru. So that's this plot plan. It simply just subdivides the property into different pieces that will either be sold or leased to the different individuals that will be building any of those businesses on the site. Proposed subdivision map is financed and conveyed only, meaning it cannot lead directly to the development, nor does it require any physical improvements, as the underlying plot plan dictates the manner of the site development. The function of the map is to solely, is used solely for simplified conveyance of portions of that parcel to individual users. So for that matter, from the standpoint of the California Environmental Quality Act, the existing plot plan, 15 PP dash 03, and mitigated negative declaration 16 dash MND dash 01 remain current and will be relied on in the proposed actions associated with the actual development of the project, not this map. The Planning Commission voted at its meeting on April 11th, held a public hearing, I'm sorry, and received testimony and voted to recommend that the city council approve this tentative tract map for a two-year period based on the findings stipulated herein, subject to the attached conditions of approval. The findings, in order for the city council to approve the subject map, the following findings are required, and those are listed one through four. And staff recommends that city council, one, hold a public hearing, and two, approve tentative tract map 37045 for a two-year period based upon the findings stipulated herein, subject to the attached conditions of approval. And lastly, I have one addition to the conditions of approval, and that is condition 3.5. That was something that came up in the Planning Commission meeting from our attorney's office, as well as the planning director. And that reads as follows. "A set of covenants, conditions, and restrictions," otherwise known as CCNRs, "shall be established and recorded on the properties contained within this map to provide for reciprocal parking amongst the different owners and users. The CCNRs shall be reviewed and approved by the city planning department and city attorney's office prior to recreation."
Thank you.
And that's all I have. Was that 3.5, I'm sorry?
We'll, we'll get to questions in a second. Ms. White, do we have anyone who's asked to speak on this?
No, we do not. We do still have to open and close a public hearing now.
Okay. So we'll open the public hearing at 6:37 and close it at 6:37. And before we ask comments, if you could just briefly, just a good understanding of sort of a summary of where we are in the process from beginning to end, give me an idea of what you think the timeframe is moving forward, and how many more, give me an idea of what, when council will see this issue again, as far as, I'm, I'm still trying to get an understanding of tentative tract maps, final plot maps, all of that. So I don't want you to take more than a couple minutes if you can, but just to give us a summary.
No problem, we'll do it quickly. So the whole process started years ago when we were approached by the developer to start talking about what can be done on this property. And then they started working with us to find users. So that took, I don't know, a year, a year and a half. Then we did the environmental, went out to the street with the environmental for public comments, notified all the property owners, and then scheduled that planning commission meeting. That's when the plot plan, so the elevations, the design of the buildings, some of the users with their conditional use permits get approved. So that's been done. So now what they do, in this case, because the owner of the property has no interest in leasing each of these buildings, or building the buildings and leasing them to the individual users, they'd much rather split the property into five pieces, sell Sonic Burger, their, their two acre, for example, parcel. Sonic will build their thing and then operate, but it'll be a cohesive shopping center, because it was approved as such, but built in different phases. So the map comes in to, to parcelize the property. You will see a final map coming back to you. I told him already to get working on it, because the parcel lines looked good to us, so it's not as, there you had a parcel line over a building or something. So they should be submitting the final map, which gets permanently recorded and will not change.
Does that come to planning and council, or just one?
I think just city council.
Okay.
So that'll finalize it. They'll have vested rights to, to sell off those properties. That should happen in about a month. Normally, in my experience, once they get this tentative approved, and they get the plot plan approved, which if it passes tonight, will have those two things complete, they will start working on their working drawings, in terms of building plans, structural, the grading plans, so precise grading for the entire property. And then they're gonna get those into the planning department and public works department as soon as possible. And as soon as those plans are completed, they can pull a building permit and get moving on it. I think Sonic is the most ambitious, because they're the ones that have been talking to me about impact fees and how fast we can get plan checks completed. So my guess is they'll probably be the first one to submit everything.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Roscoe, you had some questions?
No, one of the stipulations or conditions, 3.5, is that, that's not, that's not, wasn't on the, but that was added?
We added it at Planning Commission, and I simply printed the wrong version for the agenda packet. So then I went back and found the right one, and then that's why I read it out loud until it recorded.
Okay, making sure, because I was kinda going.
No, it wasn't on there.
Okay, I'm good. So I just wanted to make sure.
Any other questions?
No, that was it.
Any other questions by council? Ms. Carroll?
This is west of Highland Springs, right?
Yes.
Okay.
This is east.
By the CHP office.
CHP.
Yeah, right next to the CHP office.
Well, it said, is that white, because you saw east on the big one? I saw the same thing.
Yeah, yeah. I just.
No, it's in our city, sorry.
Well, it says, it says.
No, it's, yeah, no.
We can't give Banning credit for this one.
Okay.
Are we all good?
Yeah, I clarified.
Okay, can I have a motion? I will move to approve item 19, the tentative tract map 37045.
With the added condition as stated.
Yes, for a two-year period based upon the findings stipulated herein, subject to the attached conditions of approval.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Carroll?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes.
Item number 20 is a memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Beaumont and Trinity Partners LLC for the Beaumont Village Development.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So a quick background is Trinity Partners LLC owns approximately 300 acres of land located, now I'm gonna get my directions correct this time, so. We're not talking about something in Ukieper, Cal Mesa. So north of the State Route 60 freeway, south of Oak Valley Parkway, and you could say south of Interstate 10, but we always say it's south, southwest of Interstate 10, and east of Portero Boulevard. So we're all talking about, and it's the thing that we've discussed for years and years, that's gonna be a mall, or Horton Plaza, or Victoria Gardens, or something like that. That was what, what the prior people had envisioned for that property. And it, it may not end up being that, but we're starting the discussions with, with the property owners now. And the general plan, so the Beaumont general plan designates the property as urban village overlay, with, with the zoning of commercial general. And the general plan requires the property to be entitled and developed as one large cohesive specific plan with multiple uses across the 300 acres. Since the time Trinity Partners acquired the, the land, they've been meeting with city staff to discuss potential development concepts. So we've seen probably three or four different reiterations of a concept plan or land use plan. The current concept that's being discussed right now is development of a mixed-use lifestyle center named the Beaumont Village. And that Beaumont Village specific plan would be proposed to include some of all of the following uses. So we'd have live, live-work units, mixed-use commercial, mixed-use residential, other single-family residential units, an open-air promenade, mixture of apartments, townhomes, senior living, assisted senior living, lower moderate income housing, and other retail and service land uses, which could include offices, hotels, parks, auto malls, and public facilities. So you name it, it'd probably be located within that property, since it, it has a magnitude of available uses, and the sheer size of the property leads itself to multiple areas that would work together. So Trinity Partners intends to expend a sizable amount of capital on the entitlement and development of the project, including onsite and offsite infrastructure. As an initial step to proceeding on the due diligence portion of their project, they requested a non-binding MOU, so memorandum of understanding, between themselves and the city council to kinda specify what their intent is as the developer, and really formalize kind of what the city would require for an entitlement process from the specific plan and the environmental perspective. An ideal timeline, so it's not a steadfast timeline, but an ideal timeline if everything works together. And an understanding of the intended land uses that the developer would like to see, as well as what the city council would like to see on the property. And they'd like to have that before, before starting down a path of spending multi-millions of dollars on, on just getting the plan in place with the environmental document. So as mentioned above, Trinity would like to include major public facilities within the project as well. So they've approached us and discussed the potential of setting up a property, which is roughly five acres, for the West Side Fire Station, and a future Beaumont Police Station. As part of the memorandum of understanding, Trinity Partners will be dedicating approximately five acres of land fronting Portero Boulevard and the new realignment of Western Knolls to the city for the development of one or both of those two public facility uses. The fiscal impact, limited funds of approximately $10,000 shall be used for the, or from the fire station mitigation fee account to prepare and process the grant deed and title associated with that dedication of the five acres. And staff does recommend that city council approve the memorandum of understanding as presented. And I can answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Do we have any public comments on this item?
We do not.
Thank you, Mr. Orsensky. Any questions?
Just one.
Sure, Mr. Martinez.
The, it says one or both of the public safety buildings, and then later in the report it says some about a possible rec center. So that's impossible as well. I don't know, I just left it off the wording there, so I'm not sure.
So we, we talked about having all of them on the same property, and then working out how, what the size of that property would be for all three facilities. And then we started looking at a new rendition of the entire specific plan. It had a very large park space within the center, the center of the huge 300 acres. And we thought, you know, it's probably better to have the community recreation center, if we're gonna build one within that development, near the parks and near the open spaces and the amenities, versus sticking the rec center right next to a police station. So we thought, we probably want the, the valuable property out on Portero and Western Knolls for ease of access for our life and safety-related response times. Have police and fire there, and have the recreation center, if one gets built, near the, the public amenities by the mall.
That's, that makes sense. Okay, thank you. At this point, we're very early in the design stage, and it's just all whiteboard work right now, right?
Yes, sir, all.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
The, property that you're discussing for the facilities, it's too early to tell what the cost for that property would be at this point. Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, we could probably get a rough, rough appraisal of what the property would cost. I'm sure they're gonna be interested in that as they dedicate it over. But it is a, a valid expenditure of, of fire station funds, which, when they build the, say, 2,000 units that'll be planned for this, they're gonna pay way more than the value of that in fire station funds. So there should be a credit given to the developer at that time, up to whatever the property value is worth when they dedicate it. Not a future value, but the value today.
Okay. Just sometimes when that's read by the, the public, they think we're getting it for free, and it's not free land. It's gonna be, there'd be an exchange of.
Yeah, fair market value with today's prices, with no money coming out of the city's pocket to acquire it. They'll dedicate it, but be reciprocated in terms of fee credits in the future.
Thank you, Kyle.
Ms. Carroll, do you have any questions?
Just clarification again on the timing of the value of the land that would be not freely given, but credited to the city. So the timing would be, when exactly on the appraisal? I just want clarification.
What we're probably gonna do is work with the public works department, as well as the landowner, to identify the exact parcel that we're looking for, and then start surveying that parcel and creating a legal description of the lot. And then that's what'll get dedicated over. And in that process, we can go ahead and start on an appraisal in today's value. That's gonna give us a fair market value of a commercially zoned property that's not entitled, with limited road access. And then that should be a comparable land value from Riverside County, and whatever that comes out at should be what we would have paid them for.
Thank you.
Mr. Roscoe, any questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Orsensky. Any discussions? Or someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item number 20, the memorandum of understanding as presented.
One second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Carroll?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes.
Item 21, a draft agreement between the city and landowners for the contribution of funds for the construction of the Portero Interchange Project Phase 1.
Yeah, councilmember, this is continuation of, of the, the agreement that we discussed at the last council meeting, when we brought the funding plan to you. The funding plan contemplates property owners within, close to the Portero Interchange, funding about 6.147 million towards the phase one of the project, and additionally, 1.7 million is coming from RSI. We're working with the property owners to finalize the agreements. There's, there is about four different types of properties that are there. There is Hartland, Old Hartland Project, that's all residential. Then there is commercial industrial properties that are within the city, but they don't have any development agreements on them. And then there is properties that are outside of the city limit, that are in the county area, that at some point will annex to the city. Then there's properties, such as the Hidden Canyon Project, where there are existing agreements, for, for development agreements in place. So we're looking at all of the different types of agreements that we'll be doing and working with the city attorney to come up with a language that would not, not only work in today's VR, our bridge and road fees, but also when we join TUMF. So, so the property owners, when they do deposit the money, either will get credit now as they pull permits, for example, Hartland, Old Hartland Project, or as they come in and pull permits at a later date, and we are part of TUMF, then the TUMF will recognize their contribution towards the project. So we're working with, with the property owners, we're working with WRCOG to finalize the agreements. We expect to start bringing either all the agreements at the next meeting, or the one after that, or at least as, as the agreements get, get approved, or get worked on, we'll start bringing them to, to the council. What's contained in the agreement is that the landowners will deposit their portion of the funding gap by August 31st, 2017. That was one of the conditions in the MOU that we, we approved. And then, and then they'll get the fee credits that go with their, with their deposit. And some of that would be fee credits towards city fees, and other would be fee credits towards TUMF. And the commencement of the construction for the project itself would be prior to December 31st, 2018. We do expect the project to start much sooner than that. We believe the project will start construction sometime early next year. But just in case there are other holes up, holdups, and other issues that come up that we need to address, so that we've put the construction date on December 31st, 2018. And that's when, if we cannot start the construction for whatever reason, we do need to return the deposit to the property owners. And then again, the, they will receive TUMF credits, once it becomes part of the TUMF network. And then again, they will receive TUMF credits once it becomes part of the TUMF network program. And then we are working with WRCOG to make sure that the language that we put into the agreement is acceptable to WRCOG. And then there was the other issue was formation of other CFTs and bridge and road benefit districts to fund the second phase of the project or other roadways that are within that area that are not included on the Phase One of the project. So that would come at a later date. At some point, towards the end of the year, we would have the analysis on the cost of those facilities completed, cost of formation of the district, and how that would work under the umbrella of TUMF. And it will bring that to council at a later date. And that will allow us to continue funding Phase Two, extension of Potrero and Ford Street, widening of Potrero itself, and any other facilities that qualify for that bridge benefit district. So we've kind of made two different parts to delivering this. One is to work on Phase One, work on getting the agreements approved and getting the funding in place to complete Phase One. And the second part is to coming up with the benefit districts that would allow us to use TUMF policies to be able to fund the rest of the phases of the project. There is no action required in today's agreement. This is just for your comments and review, and we'll be bringing the agreements back at a later date. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this item?
Yes, we do.
I'll go ahead and open public comments at 6:55.
Bruce McDonald?
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor, I'm Bruce McDonald representing USA and my company, McDonald Property Group. It's amazing when some things happen, how it leads to momentum. And I didn't get a chance to congratulate you on the settlement with WRCOG. It's tremendous for the future, for the short term and long term. And I think now what you're seeing is the confidence in the property owners to move forward to fund the gap financing. So I can tell you that we've worked with general counsel for the city on this agreement closely. We've had three attorneys on our side. We've worked closely with Amor. We've worked closely with Todd, of course, taking the leadership. And the highlights that are of interest to me that I think you should know is that we're in agreement in concept with the version three that's in front of you. There'll probably be one more version that we tinker with on some small matters, but not substantial matters. And we plan on funding our share, which the net amount now excluding RSI is about 6.2 million on it before August 31 and executing those agreements in May. They're binding agreements, and I've confirmed with all the property owners, they're in for the money, and they've agreed the, they've reviewed this agreement. So I come to you tonight except for one small property owner who I haven't made touch with on his dollar share. So the other thing you should know is that we are not complicating this agreement with this whole idea of forming a CFD on our properties. We thought that would pollute and make it complicated. So this agreement's just purely, we fund, it's your money, keep it in a separate account, and you manage that closely and report to us on how that's doing, and that's your working capital for the project Phase One. However, what we're also doing though here is we're agreeing in concept to what Amor referred to as the area benefit district, for a new fee district to include our properties and more properties around us, and that's the key to the kingdom for funding Phase Two. So we're agreeing to be part of that, and that's an interesting, very important thing to tell you tonight. So I look forward to getting everyone to execute and funding in August, and we're here anytime Todd calls. And I appreciate the effort so far, John and Todd, on this and Amor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
I have one more speaker. Sean Roy?
Council, if this project falls through, you got to think about an alternative use for the property. It's, I'm sure they're giving you this glowing report, they're marketing their project, they obviously have a very vested interest and a substantial amount of profit to be made if this project goes through for them. But I don't see the benefits in terms of tax revenue for the city of Beaumont. Obviously, there's not going to be a lot of jobs. You're looking at about one worker per 10,000 square feet. It's, you're probably lucky if you get, you know, four or 500 workers. And we're not also getting into the issue of diesel pollution that's not been addressed. So alternative uses for the property, I'm saying it's a very, my personal opinion, it's a possibility this will fall through. And so alternative uses, please consider what might be an alternative use. For example, high-end residential, rural estate, you could even consider, you know, I'm a big fan of a regional park. We're in a strategic location with the Coachella Valley, San Diego, Orange County, and Los Angeles, not only for the logistic industry, but also for resort and destination. We have a long history of resort and destination. So I'm just saying, things happen, consider alternatives if that goes through. Thank you. If it falls through.
Any other public comments?
No other speakers.
I'll close the public comments at 7 o'clock. And let me start by saying I want to thank Mr. McDonald, Mr. Pardon, Mr. Pinkney. I think we set a really high bar for you guys to jump over, and I think that you've done it. I read the agreement. I think there's a common theme in the agreement that the city is here to work with the landowners, but no future liability to the city as far as financing goes. To say that the landowners are not, property owners are not 100% behind this, I think 6.2 million in working capital says otherwise. And it is my understanding that this will not be all warehouses, there will be some logistics out there. There will also be, did you want to speak?
Assistant Commissioner.
Go ahead. Okay. There will also be, opening this up to the earlier project that we spoke about, the Beaumont Village. This is a project that I have been, the Potrero Interchange is a project that I have been very critical of because the amount of money that the city has sunk into it. And as we move forward, I want to appreciate all three of you for working towards getting this done in the way that the council requested that. So from that, would anyone else like to speak? Mr. Roscoe?
Oh, just adding to that.
Okay, Mr. Lara, would you like to speak?
Just to give Mr. McDonald, thank you for your investment in our city. I appreciate your time and energy in that. And Todd, thank you for hearing the council out as to where we were as far as financial contributions, and Mayor White put it very well. Thank you.
Mr. Martinez?
I'm good.
Ms. Lara, I mean, Mrs. Carroll.
Thank you very much for meeting that high standard. It's critical to the community and you have a future as a mediator and negotiator between the city and the city council and the public. It's been a very, very difficult thing. But I think that with this kind of a structure to the agreement, it's a really good win-win situation for us finally. The city can't bear any more risk, the citizens don't want us to bear unnecessary risk, and so you really did your best. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Let's move on to item number 22, the Economic Development Committee update.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So before you tonight, I'll just get right into it. So at March 8, Economic Development Committee meeting, members of the committee voted to present to council revised vision statement in addition to four goals that the committee has worked on and would like to present to the council for approval. The goals and vision statement are a result of seven months of hard work put in by each committee member on the SWOT analysis, which is identifying the community's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. So the first is the revised committee vision statement, and that reads as follows. The Beaumont Economic Development Committee shall work to create a balanced, sustainable, and diverse business base that leverages existing local businesses while filling in gaps by creating a plan to recruit and market to new businesses that will benefit Beaumont's growth, quality of life, and values that Beaumont City Council sets forth. And then the four committee goals that they would like to present are as follows. Number one, in no particular order, develop an economically balanced community. Number two, recruit new businesses while retaining and expanding local businesses that promote growth of primary jobs and/or sales tax revenue. The third, create quality of place that establishes Beaumont as a community to establish or grow a business. Then four, leverage the city's strengths to maximize business opportunities. There's no fiscal impact, and the recommendation is to approve the vision statement and goals presented by the Economic Development Committee. And I can answer any questions, and obviously you have two of your councilmembers that sit on the committee, and maybe they would like to chime in or they could help answer questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Orsensky. I do have a question. Do we have any public comments on this?
No.
Okay. So I understand as we bring businesses to Beaumont and we start to get into the process of negotiating, you know, what businesses, where they're going to go, what the details, the terms are, that is not something that's going to be done out in public in front of an Economic Development Committee. It's more going to be held behind the scenes with economic development, public works, the city manager, city attorney, those kinds of things. So do these goals and objectives of the Economic Development Committee, as they're stated here, do those mix properly with what you vision going forward in attracting businesses to Beaumont?
They do, and I think these broad-based goals aren't who's going to get down to the nitty-gritty or perform the actual functions associated with the work. It was setting a broad-based goal that the committee thinks the city or the community with all the different members should be focusing on. And that doesn't even mean the city recruiting a new business. It could be encouraging the hospital or the school district to expand their wing or do a new building or encourage another charter school to come in, things like that. So it's not just the city's business, but really the community as a whole. But you're 100% correct. Some of those discussions need to be held in confidence with city staff and won't be at a public meeting talking about financials or locations that could end up rising the price of all locations being discussed. I think what the committee would like to do is now kind of focus on how to create a marketing campaign or create a theme for Beaumont, a new slogan, if you will, and then possibly work with the general plan update and kind of figure out which properties may be best suited for the different types of uses, whether it be office space or commercial retail. And then hopefully towards the end of the general plan update, start working on a city of Beaumont strategic plan, an economic development strategic plan, and that would be something done at the council level, but probably with input from the committee. And that will set forth really a strategic planning process and a document that has council's vision and what they want to see for the next 10, 15, 20, 30 years, and some marching orders that staff on what we need to be doing to fulfill that plan.
Thank you. Mr. Roscoe, as a member of the committee, did you want to add to Mr. Orsensky's report?
Yeah, just, you know, kind of elaborate with the question, I mean, very good question that you asked, you know. The committee, I think it has, wants an opportunity to put input, and just like the Financial and Auto Committee, it wants to provide, and I think it's necessary, input that we take from the community, from the committee and from the community because members of that committee are very diverse and was kind of selective in terms of getting this committee going and kind of getting input from the multi-areas that make our city what it is. And, you know, from our school, from our school district, from our hospital, from the building industry, from the local secondary schools that we have here at the college level. And, I mean, it's a broad base and getting an idea, you know, they're kind of like, you know, that committee puts their ear to the ground and kind of provides input to our staff. And, you know, our city manager's present at those meetings, Kyle's present at that city, I mean, at those meetings, and there's a lot of discussion going back and forth on some of the ideas and needs. And we just need more of a direction so we know where we're going. And then we can bring, the committee can bring back, you know, it needs a task to go forward. And I think having them focus on these goals and objectives, now that having a mission and an objectives and goals, they can come back with something solid like, you know, the next steps.
Are you getting pretty good attendance? I know with the Finance Committee, we've had some openings over the last year and a half, and I don't think I've heard the Economic Development Committee come back to us to reappoint or to bring people back into the committee. How's that going? You having good attendance?
Yeah, kind of off and on because, you know, we have, of course, the director, the CEO of the hospital, and sometimes, you know, these, they're called to other duties and they're kind of ten, and so it goes back and forth. But the last couple meetings, attendance has been good. I know that we're going to be coming to you and looking for more members of that committee because we had some that resigned or left. So we'll be discussing that going forward.
Okay. Mr. Martinez, do you have anything to add as a committee?
I just think the committee's very encouraged and very excited, you know, now that these goals are set up and if we approve those goals, I think they'll now have kind of a basis on what their purpose is. I think they need some direction on where we think we want them to go next so that they have a task, like you mentioned, for us to work on. But I think they have, we have a good makeup. And, you know, attendance, like you mentioned, is, you know, kind of hit and miss depending because we have some bigwigs on there, you know, CEOs. It's hard, it's hard for them to get away and so forth to attend, but we made it to where they can have alternatives now, and I think that's going to help with attendance having alternatives come to the meetings so that we have someone representing each one of the groups. So I look forward to that.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Lara? Mrs. Carroll?
The SWOT analysis, are you, I wasn't really clear. It says leverage the city's strengths to maximize business opportunities. I'm assuming that that's the higher level of the SWOT analysis? Is that what that is?
Yes.
As a measure. So I know that the SWOT analysis has been taking up a lot of the time of the committee. Are you done with it? Are you ever, is that going to get presented to council? Is, you know, do you have results yet on that?
That's a really good question, and it's a good segue into explaining that process. So I said it took seven months. I didn't really get into the details of what occurred, but the quick Reader's Digest version is the committee went through all four sectors. So we studied the strengths of the city, we studied the weaknesses, what we can do to improve those, what opportunities that the community has that we're not necessarily able to change, and what threats are being felt by the community or poised to hurt the community that we don't really have the ability to change. So the first two were internal, the next two were external factors. So we did that, and we had a bullet point, and then the committee voted to prioritize which one of those they thought were the most valuable. So then we took the full list of all the bullet points and we sat down and we took it, because I promised that when we finished the SWOT, we wouldn't just have four boxes with bullet points in it, we would come out with something better than that. And what we did was you take a weakness and you can typically offset that weakness that we've identified with the strength or an opportunity. So we used something that we have a competitive advantage on to eliminate a threat or to eliminate a weakness. So we came up with a huge list of ideas on doing just that, connecting bullet points to create a list of thoughts. And then once we had a good list of thoughts or a list of ideas, that's where these four goals were derived from, is we created a list based on that analysis that was done over the seven months, and we created four broad-based goals that hit one or more of those list of ideas that the committee came up with. And it's in its draft form right now, so we went ahead and formalized an actual document that represents the SWOT analysis that was conducted and finalized. And as soon as the committee looks at the draft, it'll be next week, I hopefully will get them to okay the final version of that, and then we'll bring it to city council for a presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Chipotle across the street from us a weakness?
I don't know.
A threat?
It's not necessarily a threat or a weakness. It was something, you could say that competition from your neighboring cities is a weakness because they're stepping their games up, and if we don't do something to counterpunch, then we'll be left behind. So it's something to keep mindful of, but if we leverage our strengths, which is that we have developed... we have developable land, we have a great police department, just to name a few, we're pro-business here at the city, staff and city council level, we leverage those three strengths and there won't be that many things that occur in Banning that we don't have a bite at the apple on.
Now, Ms., real quick, Mr. Martinez brought up the idea that the committee is looking for tasks, assignments, things to do. Do you have some recommendations for us to consider tonight since this is on the agenda now?
I don't have anything tonight. There's sub-objectives that we identified under each of these goals that I think the committee's going to kind of mull over and decide which one of those objectives they want to focus on first. And the real next thing that we're going to be scheduling is, I think at the next meeting, so next week, we're going to have Public Works come and talk about some of the big-ticket items that are on the horizon for the city, and that would be the Portrero Interchange Project and the wastewater treatment plant expansion and D cell. So those, the business community and the rest of the members would have great interest in, and I think the city manager is also going to be reaching out to the water district for possibly the next month. And so really get an idea of where we're at infrastructure-wise, and then once we get a holistic idea of where we're at, then we can kind of focus on some of those objectives.
Mr. Lara, you have a question?
No, I was just. Just to add to that, so we did have sub-committee goals under each bullet point. We just didn't want to include them all because it's complicated, and we wanted to be able to have that discussion with council, so then, you know, kind of a little more of a broad range. But we did ask, I think one of the biggest important goals is, part of this is leverage the city's strengths. So we want, I think, it was staff's recommendation that we bring in all these discussions and our staff and to talk about the strengths that we do have, like the wastewater and other information and resources that we have, so then we can have a better idea of where to, you know, focus.
Okay. I'm just as eager as Mr. Martinez to provide some direction to the Economic Development Committee, so I hope in future meetings that you'll bring us some ideas and tasks to look for assignment.
Sure.
I've got a couple of just comments on that, too. We've got our goals, so we know that the overall kind of direction where we're trying to get to. We're in the general plan update process, you know, part of the general plan has an economic analysis for the city. That analysis really will kind of help us identify what our place in the economic development is.
Todd, I'm sorry, we're not picking up your audio.
I think they both have to be.
Is that better?
No.
Is that better? Okay. So anyway, got goals, give us a direction, general plan update occurring, which has an economic analysis. That will tell us what our economic opportunities may be. We can then develop our targets and then really ultimately create an economic development strategic plan, which we can then begin to use to execute on. So that's the process that we're in at this point.
Okay, I move to approve the vision statement and goals presented by the committee.
One sec.
We got that one. I'm on the committee stuff, it's okay. That's all right. Councilman Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Item 23 is the Finance and Audit Committee Update.
That would be my update.
Okay.
Did you hear me okay? This is a summary of the Finance Audit Committee meeting on May 1st. Also, I have a couple of comments about the April meeting and the update. The staff presented the fiscal year 2018 budget, and the committee reviewed the budget, and we had a question and answer session. The committee thanked the staff for their hard work, and then they voted to recommend that council adopt the budget. The state controllers checklist was discussed next, and according to staff, it will be updated now that the new accounting software is up and running. The checklist review has been scheduled for the next Finance Audit Committee meeting on June 5th. It is expected that most of the issues to be resolved have been addressed by the new software. The checklist and resolution of issues will be brought back to council when significant completion has been determined. Two resignations have been accepted by the committee, Diane Harris and Jennifer Burnett. They had to resign due to their work schedule. The committee would like to send a letter of thanks, signed by the council, to those members who have served us in, over the past year. The committee would also like guidance and input on moving forward to add new members to the committee. We need two regular members and two alternate members. Direction and discussion is requested. The committee has named new officers. Elaine Morgan is chair, and Ray Santos is vice chair, and Donna Pfeifer is recording At one point, the Finance Audit Committee was supposed to have a CFD workshop, so the committee would have the current, the correct information to give to residents on refinancing, et cetera. In light of the CFD meetings to be held by staff throughout the city, the committee would like direction on whether we should continue with a future agenda item of determining a recommended process for citizens to know how to obtain review and prepayment of their CFD principal balance. The committee also requested how the council would like to be updated on what is being done in the Finance and Audit Committee meetings, what information would council desire to hear out of the committee, and how can we ensure the council is being served. And in our April meeting, we had a presentation by staff on the financial software. They gave us some sample reports and some that we might be interested in seeing on a monthly or a quarterly basis. And they, they're continuing to work together with the city treasurer to produce the first phase of a segment of this reporting. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Do we have public comments?
Yes, we do.
We open public comments on this item at 7:21.
Ron Roy?
This is a little bit of an apology. I'm going to try and squeeze this in under finance, it's going to improve the finances of the city. I just wanted to submit some paperwork, which also ties in, apologies if I didn't get it earlier, to the Beaumont Village Development. I just didn't get a chance to email you, but it has to do with a rail station that's going to be needed in the San Gregorio Pass Federal.
Mr. Roy?
Yeah.
This is not it. We've already addressed this issue. If you'd like to leave that, if you'd like to leave the documentation, we'll go ahead and take.
Yeah, I was just going to write now, and I wish you a good night. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Roy. Do we have any other comments on this item?
No other speakers.
I'll close public hearing at 7:22. I'd like to respond to some of the comments in the committee meeting here. So we do need to get four new applicants.
Yeah.
Number one. Number two, when I was on the committee, I remember the direction we were given as far as the CFDs was to look at ways to address the 2% escalator. And since in the current CFDs that we've approved recently, we've eliminated 2% escalator, and the staff meetings, the, I like to call them town halls, I'm not sure what we're calling them workshops, I think is going to have a little more direction and information on both the 2% escalator as well as you're going to, you're going to cover prepay and that kind of thing, right, Mr. Pardon?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'm not sure that that is a role for the committee anymore. I would hope that you could encourage committee members to attend one or many, or more than one of those workshops. And sort of, I think one of the advantages we, I was expecting from this committee was not only to be able to review our audit and our procedures and state checks, checklist, but also to be informational for people in the community who don't, you know, we can't reach everyone, and so if we have a finance committee that is knowledgeable on these issues, it would be helpful. So having as many of the members attend some of the workshops would be very useful and getting some feedback from, from the people, the community in how they're receiving what we're trying to accomplish. And this is, this is what I'm looking for as far as a report back to us. This is perfect.
Okay.
One page tells me four or five items that you covered and gives me something to really hold on to, so I appreciate that. Any other comments for Finance Audit Committee update?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Lara?
Oh, Mayor White, we did talk about having some of the committee members, and they were interested in attending the CFD workshops. That was brought up by Mayor Protem Carroll. And the applicants, the reason we wanted to bring that back is we didn't, weren't sure how council wanted to go ahead and address the applicants. Do we want to advertise in the paper? Do we want to go through the same process we did previously? Or is there a different direction that council would like to take? And then on the review, the state audit and the city checklist, Treasurer Carroll can do a better job of explaining the differences than I can, but we are bringing that back and we will, the finance committee will be working on that as a group, and then once it's completed, we will be bringing that back to council. Thank you.
And I'd like to get consensus from council. I believe that Diana and Jennifer were very instrumental the first year on the Finance Committee, and I agree with the idea of a letter coming from council that we sign. So is anyone opposed to doing that? No? Okay. And I guess that's it for this item. We'll move on to.
Can I?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Clarification. So will the city manager have somebody draw up the letter? I just want to make sure somebody knows they're supposed to do it, not just that we're supposed to sign it, that's all. So what do you?
He's looking over at Mrs. Roy.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Now we'll move on to council reports. I'll go first tonight. I attended the LEAC dinner on Thursday night. It was an event that I attended last year, and it was, it was an amazing event last year. I think it was another strong showing on Thursday. It's an opportunity for a committee that's been created to honor police officers throughout Western Riverside Council, Riverside County, and for valor, for community service, for a number of things. And boy, there was probably 300, 400 people there minimum, and everyone came out, you had the district attorney and the sheriff, all the police chiefs, and one of our own officers, Officer Pete, Pete was honored for his community service. He also, as most of you know, probably assumed, he sang the National Anthem at the, at the event as well. So it was a great event, and I know that most of the council was there and it was a good time.
Sorry.
So next, we'll move on to Mr. Roscoe.
No, I have nothing to report. I would have reported, but like, I couldn't attend, so.
Okay.
That's an emergency.
Mr. Lara?
Yes. LEAC, my, one of my favorite things is the, is it the Bagpipe Corps?
Oh, UC Riverside.
Yeah, always, always a great, great thing to hear and see. There is a groundbreaking ceremony for a new elementary school, number one, on May 17th for Beaumont Unified School District. It'll be out towards the new development that Pordi has, past Chavez Elementary down on Cougar Way. I'll be attending that, and that's all I have.
What's the school name?
I think Mr. Pardon named it Chavez Junior.
Right.
Let's hope that name does it.
Chavez. I attended the LEAC event also. It was superbly done. Not only was it wonderful to see Officer Pete recognized, but Officer Fagan, Commander Fagan, did a spectacular job of chairing the event. It went with great precision. My poor husband had to listen to me for an hour after I got home telling him about the biographies and why people got awards, and it was very well done. The Finance Audit Committee meeting, I thought, was extremely productive. We covered an awful lot, as you saw in the report. I attended Les Mis Rob, the play at the high school. It was wonderfully done, was, I hope they do more of those productions. It was a big production for high school. They had been working on it incredibly long time, and it was really showed. The Vets Expo is going to be doing a job fair, and everybody, I believe, got a flyer in their box tonight, so we're looking forward to that. That's in June. I'm sure Anita will come back and talk to us about that, but it's going to be open to everybody, and the, if anybody needs a copy of the flyers, I've got, I have extras. The Women's Club, I want to mention that they are having their 100-year celebration on the 13th of May, and I'd have to, I believe the time is 10 o'clock, and I'm planning on attending. The Women's Club does so much for the community, pretty quietly most of the time, and so I encourage all of my council members to attend. It's not just any anniversary, it's 100 years, and there's not a lot of clubs in Beaumont that we can say that, and they have done remarkable things, so I appreciate very much any attendance anybody can do for that. And I will be going to the Student Appreciation Dinner tomorrow evening.
Do you have a date on the job fair in June?
It is the 22nd of June.
Okay.
It's 9:00 to 12:00 a.m. That one's in my head because I did the flyer. So if anybody's got any problems with the flyer, just see me.
And that was what date did you say?
June 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the, in the civic center here. And it is open to all. It's not just military, so.
I'm showing June 22nd as a Thursday, is that right?
The flyer is, unless I'm, yeah, Thursday, June 22nd.
Okay.
9:00 a.m. to 12:00.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Martinez?
Yeah, I RSVP'd for the Women's Club weeks ago. I'll see you there. I attended the RCA meeting on May 1st. We approved the resolutions to help clarify some of our policies for the RCA. We approved the annual budget of $25,138,550 for the RCA, and we approved the biological monitoring program for data collection for over 146 species and habitats within the area. I too attended the LEAC and was very moved, especially with the memorial part of the fallen officers with the bagpipes, it was very, very moving. And again, I congratulate again Officer Pete's for his flawless rendition of the anthem again and his receiving of his reward, and again, also Commander Fagan's great job at his master ceremony part, minus some of the jokes that were attempted in humor. You would have been proud. Again, the EDC committee I also attended, as the report showed, and our committee members are now, now that the goals are out of the way, I think we have, I don't want to say a hurdle, but it took a while to get there, so now that that's done, I think we can finally get into some of the meat that a lot of the members are looking forward to, to working on. And lastly, I attended the Special Olympics event at Beaumont High School on the 28th. I commend Principal Pierce and her staff for doing an outstanding job of coordination and implementation of that program. We had over 200 high school students from Banning, Ukaypa, Santa Seno, and Ukaypa participate, oh, in Beaumont. We had an Olympic village set up by the high school clubs to help with activities for all the participants, and we hope to schedule that for a yearly event. And I further congratulate the Special Olympic Program Specialist Stacy Fish and the Beaumont High School Coordinator. High School Coordinator Heather Cook. It was a remarkable event to see all the students out there for the Special Olympics was very moving and it was well appreciated, so.
Thank you. City Treasurer report.
I think the only thing I would like to say is that it has been a little frustrating coming on board when all the new accounting software is being integrated. So I've been a little frustrated getting numbers and reports, but I think we are making progress. I have some, you know, I have the software, but you know, I do need some training from someone on the reporting aspect of it. So, and I did attend the Economic Development Committee meeting and I found it really worthwhile. I enjoyed it, so.
I know we talked earlier about permissions, access, training. And I think it's been the position of this council that we give you everything that you need to be able to do your job. So if you have any, you know, issues, please don't hesitate to go to Mr. Pardon first. And, and then if there's any way we can help, let us know. Okay? Thank you. And we have the City Manager report.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate Kyle. He actually gave us correct directions. He didn't say the 10, he said I H10. I was pretty impressed with that earlier, so kudos for understanding directions a little bit better now. So it's good.
I hope he doesn't start saying y'all.
Yeah.
He popped one out, it didn't work very well.
He tried.
He's trying, he's trying. You know, biggest issue we have, starting tomorrow, we have our first community workshop for our CFD. You know, we've gone through quite a bit of work to reconcile those. Our consultants, our special tax consultants, as well as our FA have been going through a monumental amount of work to look at what options we may have to try to restructure where we can. It's a very complex issue, as y'all know, and not every IA, you know, is the same. So each one's got a little bit different bent to it. It was important to us that we do this program in a way that tried to maximize the opportunity for folks to come and attend. And so we wanted to get out to communities and address that. So we've got four meetings that have been scheduled. So the first one is tomorrow night here at City Hall. It'll actually be in the gymnasium over there, starting at 6:00. And that one is for Fairway Canyon, Tournament Hills and Shadow Creek. Then on the Saturday, the 6th, we're at Three Rings Ranch Elementary. And that is from 10:00 a.m. to 12:30. And that is looking at Three Rings Ranch, Stetson, Oak Valley and Solera. And then on Tuesday, May the 9th, at the Community Rec Center, we've got Sundance, South, Estrella, Cougar Ranch, Victoria Homes, Pacific Trails, Sunny Hills, Mountain Meadows and Canyon Ridge. So that'll be again Tuesday, May the 9th, from 6:00 to 8:30 at our CRC. And then finally, on Wednesday, May the 10th, we have Four Seasons, Seneca Springs and Aspen Creek. And that'll be at the Lodge there at Four Seasons. And so for council, remember, if y'all live in one of the IAs, you obviously have a right to attend as a citizen. You do not give up your rights as a citizen of Beaumont, but you do need to be careful. Recommendation that we have would be to maybe abstain from attending those particular workshops where you either reside or where maybe you own property or within, what, 500 feet? Gotcha. So anyway, but an additional to that is we know everybody's not going to be able to make those meetings. One of the critical issues that is out there where most individuals may be able to realize a more significant effect or savings on their special tax assessments is through the discretionary element of those special assessments. That's future facilities or pay go. And so knowing that, you know, in our meetings, we're going to have a section that's really trying to help draw information from our citizens on terms of those dollars and how they want them. Do they want them returned? Do they want them to be applied to specific needs within their subdivision? Do they want them to be applied to things that they feel like that we need overall within the community? So we're structuring to be able to have that input. But that being said, nobody's going to be able to get to these meetings. So we will be announcing and we will be doing a little bit of social media work on a little Survey Monkey instrument that we're putting together. And so, once we conclude the last meeting on the 10th, then we'll go live with that. I've sent council a draft of, of those questions. It's real simple. We're looking, I think, at five questions that really are trying to delve to the heart of those discretionary dollars. And so, you know, we'll go and advertise and put that out there. So as we have each one of our workshops, we'll mention that, that document will go live. So it'll be up for about 22 days. So it would come on, on the 11th. And then we'd be taking input on that survey instrument through June 1st. That's a Thursday. And then that gives us Friday then to be able to pull that together. One issue though, in order to count the results that come back to us, we would need somebody's valid address, Beaumont address, because we need to make sure that input is coming from within our community. And furthermore, it allows us to be able to determine what IA or what subdivision that people reside in to kind of help, help us focus and look at what may be needed within specific neighborhoods. So that kind of helps us do some quality control and input and give you better information on how to be able to process that. So that's our program there. We are scheduled to try to come back to council with a, at least a summary report, maybe the first, hopefully it would be the ultimate report, if we can get together fast enough. But on the 16th of this month, we'll be coming back to you. So we get them done through the next couple of weeks, try to get as much information compiled as we can and come back to you and begin to present that information. And then Cherry Cup happened two weekends ago. Mayor was there, did the coin toss that was there. I don't know, Mayor, what do you think, there was about 4 million people in Beaumont?
Closer to six.
Okay, yeah, at least.
It was the biggest soccer event probably of all time.
Had to be, had to be. Put the World Cup to shame, I tell you. That's for sure. But one of the key issues though, that was neat is Field Four was a fantastic rehab, field rehab project that was a conjunctive effort between Bob and his crew and ASO. And so, you know, we're very fantastic, have ASO and such a great organization, our community, you know, helping our kids. But if you ever get a chance, you just want to go kick the ball around, go check out Field Four. It's really fantastic. It's probably one of the best fields you're going to find in this region, maybe in the universe. I'm pretty sure in the universe. If you go to Mars, you will not find a better field, I can guarantee you. I guarantee you. So anyway, that was good. And then we've got some calendars for you also. We're heading into the busy season, so you know, May is kicking off with events that are pretty much every weekend, something going on. And as we get into June and July, yeah, it'll just continue to be a fun place to be. So that's all for the report.
Thank you. I have a question and comment about the community workshops. First question from Mr. Pink. Myself and, and Mrs. Carroll also expressed an interest in attending the workshops that our neighbors are going to with the idea of getting there, welcoming them and then leaving. Is, do you see a problem?
So is this your, the community you reside in?
Correct.
I wouldn't do it.
Okay.
And I, even though, and I agree with what the City Manager said, that you don't, you don't forfeit your right as a citizen to even participate as a member of that community. But, you know, the risk is that people that are attending that are going to ask you questions in your position as a public official. It's inevitably going to happen. And so I think, well, my recommendation is not attend, have somebody else from your household attend on your behalf.
And is there a problem? Because I'd like to have the council show support. Is there a problem with us attending somebody else's workshop?
One that you don't own a beneficial interest in real estate in? No, there's not. These are community meetings, they're public meetings, as long as you are not getting together and communicating as a council about issues that are germane to the city.
Okay.
And these are open to the public, correct?
Yes.
So, yeah, so it's a public meeting and the Brown Act allows the council to attend public meetings as long as you're, other than in the course of the, the ordinary course of the meeting, you're not participating.
Okay.
Or having a conversation among yourselves about city business.
Okay, well, I think it would be good if we could show some support at each of these events. The only one other than the one I'm not allowed to go to that I can attend is Tuesday, May 9th. So I will be going to the Tuesday, May 9th event at the, the Rec Center. Are any of the rest of you planning on attending one of these?
I'll attend Wednesday, May 10th.
Okay.
At Four Seasons, Seneca Springs.
Mr. Roscoe, did you, were you planning on attending one of them? Or Mr. Martinez?
You took mine. Can I, can I attend the same one?
What's that? Yeah, I don't see why not.
I was planning on attending the May 10th one.
Okay, I don't...
And I have a question for the City Attorney about the May 6th one.
Okay, go ahead.
That's all I can do.
I guess I just want to talk about what it is that you recommend it. I go to meetings in Solera and people ask me questions about, you know, what's going on with their CFDs and did we find out this yet or that? And I answer questions all the time, but I don't understand what the difference is between me going and sitting in the audience and not interfering with the meeting at all or not being a part of the meeting in a verbal way. But I'm not really sure why it would be a problem with sitting there. And let me tell you what my concern is. My concern is I do not want anybody in my community to construe that I'm not there in a negative way because they don't really understand that this is what your recommendation is. So if I'm not there, you know, and, and let's just say they're not crazy over the message, then I don't want them to think that I didn't attend because I'm not supportive of the overall message of the hard work that's been done by the City Manager and the consultants. So I'm in a bit of a dilemma and I don't really want to be controversial about your opinion. I respect that, but I, I guess I just don't get the demarcation here.
So the, you go to community meetings in your, in your neighborhood, right?
Yeah, I do.
HOA meetings, that sort of thing.
Somebody will say to me, how's that CFD stuff going? And I answer...
And that's fine, and that's fine. There's nothing inappropriate about that. This is a meeting that's being organized by the city though. It's a little bit different. And it's leading to an ultimate goal of refunding CFDs. And so while legally you're not precluded from attending as a, a city-sponsored, organized meeting as a member of the community, these are a little bit different than your HOA meetings. They're, they're geared towards this idea of refunding, which will financially benefit you.
Okay.
Which is different than, you know, just a typical HOA meeting. And although you don't give up your right, I mean, any of you as council members, you know, you retain your citizenship in the community and you have the right to stand here at the podium as a member of the community and speak as a member of the community, not as a public official. But I recommend against it because in, in that environment, you may be asked questions as a council member, as a public official, rather than as a member of the community. So is it, and who are we going to have at the meetings? Is it going to be City Manager and our CFD consultants?
Couple of staff.
Yeah, I think the better practice would be to have somebody else from your household and they could even say, you know, you can't be here at the City Attorney's recommendation. And it's not just about following the law, but even avoiding the appearance of impropriety. So if another council member goes to a city-sponsored meeting that is focused on the issue of refunding the CFD in their community and they're, you know, they're participating in the meeting and they're advocating as a council member for refunding the, the bond, somebody can make an argument that they're influencing the decision-making process.
All right.
And I want to avoid even getting close to the edge on this. So I know it's a lot to ask, but I think it's the safer road. And we don't want to do anything that would jeopardize these refundings that are going to benefit the whole community. So I, I wouldn't do anything that would, that would call it into question or jeopardize it in any way. So that's, that's my recommendation.
I appreciate that. I, I feel like I get really good quality information by being involved in the process. And I was just concerned that if I don't go, that it's perceived negatively, that somehow or other indirectly, I'm not that supportive of what it is, that the work that we've done to try to figure out what those current answers are at this point in time. And so that's where most of the concern was coming from. Not so much that I don't feel like I have to attend, so I personally find out information, although I care very much how it's accepted in the community. You know, so if, if it's, but I get what you're saying about the financial interests. I hadn't thought of it from that particular perspective.
I can tell you that. You know, when I do some introductory comments, I'll mention that your council member will be here due to the conflict. The other thing is we are going to try to do a video recording of all the workshops. And so those will be then available on the city website. And then we'll also have the presentation materials, the powerpoints that are contained will be on as well. So, so hopefully we've got that.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
That's good. I was going to ask you if we were going to record it because I, I do think that there's a concern that many people will not be able to make it. But I also did want to ask you, so what are we doing to distribute this information? Because it's a fairly short window on when these events are occurring. How are we getting the message into the communities?
Well, we've got social media that's been out there. You know, we're talking to HOAs, we've been talking to folks that have been helping to get the word disseminated. And so, you know, we've had some phone calls, we've had some follow-up, there's been some, some interest out there. And so we'll continue to push that and then, you know, hopefully, you know, there'll be some other media coverage that'll help to cover that and keep getting the word out there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let's, any other questions about the City Manager report?
Mayor, you can put me for May 6th. I'll be able to look at that.
I'm on, I'm May 10th.
Yeah, so...
Guarantee is though.
Okay.
Yep, soccer.
Okay. So now we'll move to the City Clerk report.
Nothing to report.
Okay. City Attorney report.
Nothing to report this evening.
I have a question for you. I believe when we first came on and we were also starting the Economic Development Committee, you held, your firm held an ethics training class. Is that something that we need to consider doing again? Because we have to do it every year.
You have to do it every two years.
Every two years.
And that's required by law. We just did one for your Treasurer and your City Clerk.
Okay.
A couple of weeks ago, I think.
Okay. I know we can do it online.
So the city, the Assistant City Clerk keeps track of when you're, I believe, don't you keep track of when they're up for renewal?
Yeah. And it's... We look at it and see where it's at.
Yeah, so if it's, if it's coming up on two years, we'll, we'll schedule another one and we'll, we'll do it with a, try to get a large group of people out so that we can do it all.
I started mine online and I know that I didn't finish in time. And it's just easy to walk away and not come back to it. So I just want to remind everyone that...
Yeah, every two years, AB 1234 training is required and that's, you know, Brown Act, Conflicts of...
League of Cities offices does that too. And I worked on to a conference pretty soon. League of Cities, they, they have a...
Yes, onto, the FPPC online training is actually, I take it, probably once a year. I do the FPPC training online. But we're happy to do a presentation here and that would be for the council members, Planning Commission, any City Commission members, and we may, we may have some new City Commission members that we need to catch. Department heads, Economic Development Committee, yeah, we'd be happy to do that again.
Okay, maybe you can... Maybe you can advise us whether or not we need to do something. I'll go back and finish mine. I was waiting for you to call me and say, "Where is it? We haven't done this yet." Okay, so we will move on to future agenda items. No future agenda items? Does anybody want to talk for one minute? I picked 7:55 for the meeting.
7:53?
During the meeting at 7:55.